Good evening. My name is Sean Rourke. I'm the Chair of the Milton School Building Committee. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:33 and just do a roll call for attendance. I'll call you out. Mike?
Zulus?
Yeah, I'm here.
Aqua?
Present.
Tim Lombard?
Present.
Betty White?
Here.
And Scott Taraschek?
Here.
Present. Cool. All right. The first thing on our agenda is Citizen Speak. So we offer up three-minute segments to each member of the community for a total of 15 minutes. So if there's somebody in the audience that does want to speak, if they could just kind of kindly raise their hand. When you do talk to, we just need your name and address for the minutes also. And Mr. Jackson, you're recognized.
Good evening. I'm glad to see you guys at work. This is all going to be new material, I think, for us. And since Citizen Speak is at the beginning of the meeting, before we see the material, I'm wondering how we have an opportunity to ask questions or, you know, get some feedback. Should we submit things in writing or will you give us an opportunity at the end of the meeting? Because it's a lot of new material. Thanks.
No problem. You'll see it as it goes through. Pete, I know we typically don't respond, but you know, tonight's kind of just an update of kind of where we're at. Some of the, some are most of the materials repetitive from before. But our goal is to cut, you'll hear it during the meeting as we go through to do some more public forums that would allow that kind of back and forth free Q and A. So you know, we do, we do know you guys are asking questions or have questions that are out there. And we're planning on doing some upcoming forums. You'll, you'll hear about it as we kind of go through. Anyone else for Citizen Speak? And seeing none. Perfect. We'll move over to first thing on the agenda, second thing on the agenda, or third, if you count it that way. So the first part of what we'll call the old business is review and approve the meeting minutes. So as you know, we had a number of meeting minutes that were kind of outstanding. We did a number of them at our meeting, I believe in June. There were some comments that came back on them. So we've gone through, revised all those minutes and kind of distributed them prior to the meeting. So just seeing if anybody has any comments on those. And if not, we'll entertain any motions.
I have a question, Sean. Will we be individually approving each meeting minute? Are we going to approve the block of them?
I would assume if there's no comments on them, it would just be the block of them. If we have to, I'll defer to Mike. If we have to go, you know, each one by each one, I'm fine doing that also.
I mean, if, if the members are comfortable voting for the block, then it seems to me that would be fine. Sean, the only comment I had is similar to the one I had in June. And, and we just want to make sure that we have an actual list of the documents referenced in the minutes. And I know in some of them, we refer to the documents in the body of the minutes. But there's a technical requirement that you kind of duplicate that and have kind of a list at the bottom. So that's the only thing that we actually want to make sure we have. And, and I'd be happy to, to approve them subject to having that list actually at the bottom, put at the bottom.
But that's Yeah, I know some of them.
Technical requirement.
Yeah, we had some of the drawings kind of attached at the end of it, but if it's just a text for that, we can strip that down.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, the documents don't have to be attached. It's just a list, you know, just a description of the document. Gets kind of unwieldy if you attach all documents to minutes.
Yes, it does. Okay, so outside of that commentary, that's something we can, you know, I can edit fairly quickly. Are there any other comments or edits or suggestions? If not, entertain a motion.
So if everyone's comfortable voting on the minutes en masse, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of February 28th, March 29th, April 12th, April 25th, May 9th, May 23rd, May 27th, June 27th, and June 11th. I'm sorry, July 11th.
I'll second.
All right. So do another roll call vote. I'll call you out as I see on the dominoes up here. So Mike?
Zulus? Yes.
Aqua?
Yes.
Tim Lombard?
Yes.
Betty White?
Yes.
And Scott Taraschek?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you very much. I'll get those over to the town. We'll get those published. So next thing on the agenda under Old Business is talking about our article for the land swap. So you know, as of right now, Select Board held a meeting last week where they set the deadlines for the articles to go to the Warren Committee. And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, it's Wednesday, October 12th?
Yeah, that's the deadline. We, we, you know, it's that, that, if everything comes in on the 12th, it would make it a push for the Warren Committee prior to the printed date. So to the extent that we can get the article to them prior to that, even if, you know, there are, there are placeholders for meets and bounds, I think it would be helpful for the Warren Committee.
So yeah, typically, similar to last time, you know, Mike and myself, we work with Town Council, kind of drafting the language for the article, which will want to get in front of us so that, you know, we can get the prior approvals before we present it. As we talk about future meetings and updates there later in the agenda, I've kind of worked out what I think would be a good schedule for us as a committee to meet over, you know, the next month, month and a half prior to that day coming up. So we can talk about that after. Any general questions about, you know, the plan for the article or anything like that for the committee, from the committee? Hearing none. The next topic on the agenda is discussion or kind of an update. So the last time we met, we did, we took a vote for professional services from BSC Group. They're currently working on a price. I was hoping we'd have it by tonight. So essentially, we could execute their contract. But they're still waiting to get that information to us for a price. So sometime between, in the next week or two, we might call it impromptu quick meeting, just to review the scope and the cost. And then, you know, get a formal vote on that. So we can execute that contract and get them going. For those of you who might not have been at the last meeting, I do have the documents here. If you kind of want me to kind of walk through them, just let me know.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but I don't want to subject everybody. Just for me, I was away. Sorry.
Honestly, it's fine. That's, that's kind of, you know, part of the reason of doing tonight's meeting, Tim, was, you know, just getting people again up to speed and everyone on the same page as we kind of transition into September, leading into town meeting, which I think is going to be a whirlwind as always.
Thanks.
So yeah. Last meeting either. So if you consent, if it's going to take a lot of time, you can send it and we'll review and send out questions.
No, I'll walk through fairly quickly, just so everyone's kind of on the same page. So let me just present the screen again. That's So essentially, what our plan was, we're having BSC Group put a price on right now and then actually perform these services once we execute their contract for it. The first step is, you know, on the parcels that we're looking at. So the, the map that we're looking at here is the Guile Road land swap that we talked about last year. On the right-hand side of Guile Road on this side is the conservation parcel. On the left-hand side of Guile Road that comes down here is the, is the parkland side. So the first thing we're asking BSC Group to do is go through and survey the, the boundaries of the wetlands that exist out there right now. And from our understanding from sidewalks that we did, there are essentially three of them. There's the boundary that was listed here on the prior documents that we got in 2000 when they extended Guile Road down through. There's a body of water, a small pond up here, which we identified as, you know, item number two. And then Steve Ives, when we met with the Conservation Commission, did a walk, noted some potential wetlands that could be along Guile Road approximately right here. So the, the first step for BSC Group is kind of define where these boundaries are. And as far as I see them, there are constraints for us for essentially our next step. So once, once those boundaries are picked out, we've asked BSC Group, their civil engineering team to basically design what I show here, very roughly, is a conceptual road or the realignment of Guile Road that we talked about. And basically, you know, I had discussions with them today. You know, the intent is to try to move Guile Road as close to the boundary to the wetlands as possible that we can to kind of free up more of the park parcel. So we can merge it with a smaller portion of the conservation land. So essentially, you know, the next step that we're asking to do, or the scope that we're asking to do is kind of design this road. The step after that is a boundary survey of what remains of that park parcel. So basically, what is remaining there? So we can kind of know the delta of the parkland that's going to be utilized for our project. Then after that's kind of established, what we're doing is a physical flagging of boundaries on the conservation land. And I'll walk you through these. So the first one, as we discussed, or, you know, we, we've changed our, our, our design is a 300-foot buffer from Blue Hills Parkway. So there's going to be a set of flags that will run across the parcel at 300 feet. So that's our kind of boundary for what we're leaving as conservation land. Everything shown in green. The second is essentially boundaries for 50-foot offsets from the boundary line from Home Inc. that you see here. And essentially, what they are is 50-foot increments as you go in to, to the land. And again, these are visual markers that will be out there. My full assumption is with Conservation Commission, we'll be doing another site walk sometime this fall. So we want to get those in prior to that site walk. So the next part is kind of an exercise, depending on what those, depending on where the road goes on this side of how far over we can push it, is going to equate to how much of the conservation land, you know, we're going to need. Again, trying to keep everything around that six-acre number that we were given by DRA. So the first part here was, would be taking, you know, a 50-foot offset that we talked about before with Home Inc. and having that as our boundary. And then doing a meets and bounds survey for what we're calling Proposed School Building Committee Parcel 1. And again, this is diagrammatic. This is not what it's going to be, but it was a concept that we had to provide to BSC Group to kind of allow them to scope it. They'll be doing full surveys of these. The next one, which we call Proposed SBC Parcel 2, is a smaller one because now that boundary from Home Inc. has changed from 50 feet to 100 feet. And basically creating a smaller parcel, again, just to kind of see what that parcel would be. And then a third one for Proposed Parcel 3, which would be 150-foot offset. So we're doing these more to come up with an idea of truly, you know, how much land we're going to have. The, the driver of this whole thing is essentially how far over we can push. Sorry about that. How far over we can get the road, you know, appropriately aligned and free up as much space over here. Again, to utilize as less of the conservation land as possible. Any questions, Tim? Aqua?
Thanks, Sean.
No problem. So.
If Sean, the, the, the only, the only thing I, I would add is that the goal was, and you alluded to it, the goal is twofold. The goal is to use as little conservation land as as possible. And, you know, we're talking maybe about three to three and a half acres at this, at this point. And, 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 and putting much more conservation land than that back in. And also moving it as far away from Home Inc. as possible to satisfy that interest. So, so the goal is to try to come up with a, a, a plan that satisfies all of the, the various interests involved here. So that hopefully we can get, we can get a consensus view of this.
You have any interest?
I'm wondering, are we also considering the space between the the other side, the, the, as we move this, we get closer to my neighborhood. Are we considering tiering the 50, 100, and also additional buffers? Is that something? Looks like to me, maybe it's just a fast reaction that there's so much consideration about the reaction from Home Inc. that we're literally moving the project a little too close into the other borders. Are we also considering the tiers, the 50, 50, 50 on the extreme end? Because that's where you even have more of actual wetlands. I'm not sure about that. Yeah, if you understand what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I do. Let me, let me pull the, pull it back up just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. Because for me, graphics work a lot better.
Yes.
So when you're saying.
To the far left, we seem to have fixed the boundary closer to the Pine Brook neighborhood. We've moved the entire project that way. And my initial understanding, the way it looks to me is that we're giving more than adequate weight to Home Inc. And we're tiering 50, 50, 50 coming in for Home Inc. And there's no consideration to the Pine Brook area. And that's where the current real wetland stays. The area that we're creating buffers actually dry land. I know this neighborhood because I live there. So the area, actually considering to the left is where there's real water.
Yep. Yeah, part, part, part of what we're trying to do with that is, you know, like we said, we're identifying that first boundary of wetlands that are there. So my understanding is, as they, as they define the wetland boundary, there, there's a buffer zone associated with that, 100-foot buffer zone. So the first 25 feet of that buffer zone, they consider a no-build zone. So obviously, we'd be doing nothing within that 25 feet. The, the next 75 feet is buildable, you know, for the road and stuff like that. And those are kind of some of the, the concept we're coming up with for the road right now is, wouldn't be finalized, it wouldn't be permitted or constructed. It's there again to kind of define, you know, the boundaries that we'd be looking at. And then as we get into construction documents, we'd be designing that road. But the intent isn't to push it into the wetlands or anything like that.
No, but, but what I'm saying is, I see huge consideration here, 50, 50, 50 feet moving. But there is really no consideration on the left side. Should we be looking at that for equity purpose? It just looks like the project was initially thought of on the far right. And now we're moving it and creating more and more consideration. So we have the blue, the purple, and the yellow line. And we're going to consider those three types of possibilities. Would it be fair to also consider it from the other end? Or are we going to wait until those ones mount legal pressures like the Home Inc. did?
Yeah, I mean, my, my take on it, and I'll open it up, you know, to, to the committee discuss too, of, you know, just looking at, you know, the 50-foot boundaries that are here in the planned school being at this location. There's, you know, between, you know, where the proposed road would go and the brook, not just the wetland boundary, but the brook looks to be over like 200, 250 feet. The other thing to keep in mind too, on there too, is, you know, any project that we're doing, we're not allowed to run off any water greater than what's there now. So, you know, the intention for the construction on this isn't to, you know, do anything that would impact Pine Tree Brook or the neighborhood there with additional runoff. There'll be supplemental studies that we have to do. Our architect informed us of that. That, you know, essentially whatever is there now can't be, you know, our, our project can't increase any of that runoff. So for the, for the, for the, for the, for the boundaries you're talking about, Aqua, you know, we're, we're essentially, would you be looking for those 50-foot?
If we look at where the word pine tree starts, right, and if we go back to the blue line, no, I mean, the, the other, the other graph, not this one.
Oh, yeah.
You see, right where, yes, right there, just before you move, right back there. There is water there. Because I know this place, there is water there. But to the far place where we're going to consider more buffers for Home Inc., that place is dry. So I'm talking about the actual need here. But I think my point is made so I don't bog down the meeting.
No, 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 that's fine. That's why we're having the meeting. So I don't mind the discussion at all.
Yeah, I guess my, my kind of reaction and understanding to this is that the Pine Tree Brook side is actually benefiting from a natural geological feature here. You know, they have more built-in buffer than Home Inc. Not, Home Inc. kind of has, you know, like, like Sean said, we'll consider these gradients of buffer zones, but Pine Tree Brook has a, the fixed benefit of geological features creating a buffer zone for them.
Yeah, and I think that when we're talking the buffer zone, and Aqua, correct me if I'm reading your commentary wrong, but you're not talking a physical distance away from the neighborhood or, or, or the brook that's there. You're specifically referencing the wetland boundary that will be there and the delineations off that wetland boundary. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm thinking, after the actual wetlands, how much boundaries are we allowing for each end? And considering that the initial thoughts were at the far right and that we're slowly, not just not moving a little bit, we've entirely moved the project to the far left. And as one who actually knows this place, all of us have walked it. When it rains, all these places were showing, it's going to be fully flooded. Let's really consider that. If not, even the roads were, well, it seems like we're, we're bending over backwards for the demands of the Home Inc. in, without consideration to the other neighborhoods. But I think I've made my point. I think we can discuss that offline so that we can make progress in the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, no. Honestly, this isn't bogging down the meeting at all. This is exactly the type of discussion I like having. And you're painting a picture of exactly, you know, with this project, we're, we're, we're cornered in by, you know, you know, three, you know, concerned neighborhoods, you know, Blue Hills Parkway, Pine Tree Brook, and Home Inc. And what we're trying to do is, you know, make, make, you know, make adjustments to what we're doing to do our best to make everybody happy. You know, if there was a perfect answer to this, to make everybody happy, I think we would have come up with that by at some point now. But, you know, we're, we're just looking for compromise from everyone. Your point is noted. And that's one of the things, that's the reason why I wanted the, the, the surveyor to do multiple boundary surveys on there. Because I do want to have a little bit of flexible room. For example, you know, if we had to shift that road further over, as you're suggesting, we might not go with the smallest option that's there. We might want some flexibility for something else. And then that's the other reason also. Once they put that, as they surveyed the land for the wetlands, they are also going to flag these boundaries. So the boundaries they show here in green are historical ones from 20 years ago. As, you know, talking to the Conservation Commission, if anything, these have expanded. But I just showed them for reference. So again, as a scoping document to the engineers, they would kind of know, you know, again, a picture is a lot easier to work with in these situations than trying to put it all in words.
So, so just, just to end my, my thoughts here. Sorry, Mike, I see your handle. What I'm asking, if it's, if it's not going to be too onerous for the committee, can we also look at or require that they give us an option where this is moved 50 feet away from whatever that line is on the far left, just whilst we're considering an option of where this is moved 100 feet. So that is not that we're looking at five different options for Home Inc., no option for my neighborhood, the Pine Brook.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, you can go ahead and I got a comment on that, but I'll, I'll touch base after Aqua, like after Mike speaks, just to let you know.
Sure. And, and I think it's a good point, Aqua. Although I, I looked at it different, a little differently. And, and, and I thought the analysis, right? From my perspective, the analysis is, where can we put the road? Where, where can you move the road to open up more, more of the, of the parcel? Can't read the number, but that more, that parcel there, where can, how far, where, where can you move the road to open up that parcel to save conservation land and address the interests of Home Inc. And so, so that, and then, and then the, the, the different demarcations of 50 feet away from Home Inc. To me, those were, how much land do you need, having moved the road where you can move it, right? Given the, the, the wetland concerns. So that's, that's the way I looked at it. Where can we move the road, given the wetland concerns? And then how much space do we need? And how much of a buffer can we, can we create for Home Inc. Having also created the, the buffer, the frontage buffer and the buffer way over to the, the kind of reverse hockey stick over to the right there, that which is going to be all maintained, right? Maintain conservation land. So, so that was the way I looked at it was how, you know, where can you put the road? And then, and then how much space do you need based on where you put the road? But I, but I see what you're saying, which is, well, maybe you don't want to put the road that far to the left. Maybe you can move it a little bit, move it a little bit to, to the right, I guess. Is that, is that what, what you're thinking, Aqua?
That's part of it. But perception is reality. The entire presentation, to me, looks like we're considering just Home Inc. We're saying how we'll move the road from where it was. We're having four different buffers. Everything looks at trying to impress Home Inc. I'm saying, I'm here, that's my neighborhood. I would be killed if I go back home and there's a presentation that I was part of the committee and there was no option for my people, right? So just bear me here, but, you know, let's show an option. Let's not fix my end and give three, six different options. They wanted a little more. And, and the real water, the real wetland is in that area. So let's, let's, we may still end up doing what you want to be done. But for the options, let's consider that as one of the options that the engineers present so that I can, I can get home at some point.
The, the, and the only thing I would just add is, is that Aqua, it's, it's, it's not a just, just trying to address the Home Inc. It's also trying to address the conservation land and that lot of conservation land and using as little of that piece of conservation land as possible. That's the other interest as well. And so, and, and so the more buffer you, you have from Home Inc., the more of that conservation land you protect as well. So that, that's the other.
Yeah, but Mike, if we have a buffer, my end is still conservation land.
Yeah.
Right? So that's, that's not a justification. If we put the buffer on my end, it's still conservation land. Either way, we put the buffer, it's conservation land. I think the perception here is, let's just at least put in some option. So it doesn't look like it's just Home Inc. just drove it all the way to my end of the road.
Yeah, if I can kind of chime in for a second, Aqua. So, you know, when, when we meet, when I, when we get the plans, you know, from, from the engineer, you know, we, we can talk about that. The options that we're given there for Home Inc., we have to keep in mind, Home Inc. is the only physical butter to the property. Out of the, out of three, you know, concerned parties that are there, you know, Pine Tree Brook is, is not a direct of butter, while they are a neighborhood of butter. You know, I mean, there's, there's no physical person on the boundary line for where we're doing it. The homes at Home Inc., you know, come right up to this line. So that was the reason from, you know, the, the concerns that we had with them through all the neighborhood meetings that we went through. They asked for that. We were doing it. The concerns I've always heard from Pine Tree Brook, and you're echoing them tonight, are, you know, water runoff, you know, flooding of the, of the thing and the impacts of, of the project on that. And, you know, as I said, when we talked with the architect, you know, the, the stormwater studies that have to be done, you know, as this project develops and stuff like that have to be studied and learned. And essentially, we're probably going to have some type of stormwater retention basins there that aren't going to allow this project to run off any excess water when it's already there right now. So, you know, the, the option, the options that you're talking about, just, just to be clear for everybody, is, you know, the setbacks that you're talking about is for, you know, boundaries from the wetlands for water runoff. The setbacks that are there for Home Inc. are, are there for physical setbacks, you know, for someone living there, looking out their window and seeing a school. Are are there for physical setbacks, you know, for someone living there, looking out their window and seeing a school.
So so whatever the reason is, we we all understand the pressures I'm talking about here. Let's just add that as an option. Let's pay for them to do that study, we will choose whatever works. But let's not take, present this without an option, showing that we conceded, what if we move this fifty feet away from my folks? To the right, i- it would not just, it wouldn't work well. I mean, that we all looked at, we moved it fifty feet, we moved it a hundred foot, we moved it one fifty, how about ours? We, at the end, it would be, I'll be able to say, we looked at both ends and this is where we arrived and we made it, made an effort, right? So just if if we have the funds for it, let's just add one more option there to be started. I think it'll be a lot easier for us to sell.
Okay, yeah, however, the the the, one of the differences, now I'll put my engineering hat on now. Is we're trying to design a road with specific curves that are, that is going to be based on, you know, that wetland boundary. Is there a specific setback from the wetland boundary that you'd be comfortable with? You know, I mean, knowing that there's there's that essentially twenty five foot no good, because that's similar to the setbacks that we talked about before for zoning. Um, where we had a boundary line put in there, we knew there's a fifty foot offset for zoning that we couldn't build anything for. And then we're offering additional setbacks from there. So essentially, you know, with the wetland boundary that would be flagged and surveyed, knowing that we couldn't go twenty five feet. You know, anywhere near that boundary line, what would be the offset that you'd be acceptable for? The only reason I ask that is. We can't conceptually go back. We could, but it'd be expensive um to do, you know, three or four different options at different setbacks all the way back through. I can ask them tomorrow, I I don't mind doing that, I I just feel it's gonna. They'd have to reprice everything and redo all that work for for it. Um, but I'm fine, if if that's if that's what we want to do, I I'm happily, I can call them tomorrow and get on the horn. So, uh, Ada.
Um, yeah, I I I hear what Aqua is asking for, and I think it's a reasonable thing to ask BSC. If they can, um, will they be flagging the road?
No.
They're they're not flagging the road, but they're, but so what is it that we're asking them to do? We're asking them to design the road, is that?
A conceptual design of the road. So what what happens is right now, what what I'm displaying is, you know. The wetland boundary, which is kind of the constraint for how we would build the road. And then we're asking them to, you know, using that wetland boundary, how would they realign our road the best way possible? To free up as much space of the parkland, so that we would use less conservation. That's that's essentially the exact quote I gave them.
Right, right. So I guess I I guess what what I'm hearing Aqua suggesting is. You know, is it possible to ask BSC to consider? Um, two possible placements of the road, one twenty five feet from the wetland. Boundary and the next one being seventy five feet, so there are fifty feet in between. Um, those two options, um, in a similar way to the fifty foot. Increments that we're talking about from the Home Inc border.
Okay. Uh, Tim, you have your hand raised?
Oh, yeah, um. You know, just a a thought about, so the road design will come in and it will obviously respect the buildable boundaries. Created by that wetland and I hope that we will, through that design of the road, also have an opportunity. To describe to the Pine Tree Brook folks who are concerned. Probably primarily with that water runoff, which we have a mandate not to increase the runoff. But maybe this design could also be an opportunity to improve the water management in that area. I don't know if it's bio swales or or what, but it. You know. You at 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 the very least, we're not going to make things worse, we may have an opportunity to improve the area.
Okay, thanks. Scott, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna say, I think Aqua's request is reasonable. And fifty feet sounds reasonable, so we'd basically be asking them to draw in the. The road at whatever the the requirement is for a setback and then. What would a set, what would it, what would that road look like if the minimum was an additional fifty feet?
Okay. So i- i- I'm just, sorry, I heard different numbers, I just want to kind of summarize kind of quickly, so. Uh, you know, Ada, you're mentioning, you know, from the wetland boundary, that twenty five foot boundary. The design of the road with that, assuming, you know, that's our worst case scenario, and I say worst case, you know, for, you know, Pine Tree Brook's concern. And then ask uh uh BSC group to take that design. Put an additional fifty foot boundary on there, redesign the road and then see what that option would be like. I- i- is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, if that, if that seems reasonable to the engineers in the group. Um, you all know better what what's involved in designing a road, um. So I I don't I don't want to ask for something that's that's unreasonable, but I I think we're, what we're trying to do is find a. A balance between the needs of Pine Tree Brook and that of Home Inc.
Yep, i- in. So I I were being this is, you know, one of your concerns, would that be acceptable for you? A- again, I just need to kind of give them clear direction, I just can't leave it open ended when we're scoping.
Where is the current, what's the current direction you've given them?
Yep, so the current direction is. For, as they go out and survey this land, they're going to reestablish this boundary that's here, right, for wetlands. The wetlands, then, what I've asked them to do is design a road within the buffer, you know, not within the buffer zone, but taking into account the buffer zone that was there. As best they can to design a road, a- and again, that. The, uh, you know, the first twenty five feet of that line, you can't build in, it's a no build zone. Uh, where that wetland is. So my guess is, within that next seventy five feet is a buildable zone, that's the hundred foot buffer that they talked about. Uh, so within that seventy five feet, they potentially could be putting a portion of the road in there, not the entire thing. Because the road isn't going to marry or be parallel to this boundary the entire time. But there could be portions of it that infringe on that seventy five feet. So with the, you know, without knowing what that boundary is, that's why the first step for them is to flag all these wetlands. Determine what that boundary is, then go back into the office, once they know where it is. Design the road based on that wetlands and, you know, to the best of their ability, design it. To free up as much of this land as possible, you know, and again, using this kind of sketch they did here. As a, you know, a concept of what we're going to do, I'm aware of the wetlands that are down here. Um, this road might be up a little bit further, but this entire thing is an exercise to. Um, you know, figure out how much of this parcel we can gain, along with the road. And then what would be remaining on that there? So that that was kind of the the scope that we asked them to do. So I think what I, I think what I'm hearing is, that would be our baseline that we're asking them to do, find everybody's agreement to that. It what I think what I asked you is, from that baseline design, you're asking them to come in an additional fifty feet, hundred feet, you know, what is that next?
So I I frankly don't, it doesn't really matter to me how many feet, we got to do what's reasonable. Again, it's the perception that we're showing this and for the far right, we're showing four different options. And there's no option at all to my, it doesn't, I don't design roads and I have, it doesn't matter to me, it has to be the best thing. I'm saying, let's figure out what's reasonable. Let's show at least one option to the left, if we're going to give the right four different options. If not, I will not be able to communicate this clearly to my folks. It's, you know, it's a horse trading. So you you, I assume you're closer to this kind of design, I'm an engineer too, but I don't do roads. So whatever is reasonable. You know, we're not deceiving them, whatever is reasonable and is possible that we could do, let's just show that there is an option. We could have done this a little closer, but here's the option of moving it further. And whether we do it that way at the long run, doesn't matter, it's just that it would make it a lot easier for for us to even get the override. Which we will meet at the end.
Right. Scott, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, I was going to say, we're we're doing it in fifty per fifty foot increments on the Home Inc side, right? Correct. Make makes sense that we use that same increment on the other side, I think.
Okay, for a single fifty foot increment, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Right, I'll reach out to him tomorrow on that and then, um, uh, you know, on our next meeting. Oh, as he, as they'll kind of get them, which will be good, they will get them to kind of revise their pricing accordingly. Um, and like I said at the beginning of the meeting, we'll be able to jump into hopefully a another quick meeting. Uh, we're going to review that, you know, final pricing for that, so, um, yeah, I I'm good with that. Any other commentary on this, while we're going? And hearing none, I'll stop sharing my screen, appreciate it. And so next on our agenda. Um, that was it, we're into new business now. So perfect, so kind of feeding right into that too. Depending, it most likely, you know, from the initial numbers that I was hearing about from uh BSC group. We might have additional funding still left over, so we'll be able to fund this with our available funds, which is roughly, I think, about twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, so with this, whatever available funding we have left over, my hopes would be, and and. I'm putting it out there for everyone now to kind of discuss too. Of whatever one of those parcels we kind of come up to or a potential in each one of them. Um, we we work with DRA, uh, yeah, DRA again, to come up with some conceptual designs. Of, you know, what the program would look like on those sites, so. Um, I'm just putting it out there again for folks' discussion, if you need me to, I can pull the uh plans back up to. Yep, Scott.
Uh, just thinking, maybe we have them come up with with one design that we just can move around. Depending, instead of multiple designs, it it won't change that dramatically from, you know, fifty feet in one direction or the other, that way we're not. Spending too much on it.
Yeah, good, good, it basically modular design, like pieces that we can move, got it. Anybody else? Mike, sorry, the light hand in your background with the ceiling.
Are we all agreed that we want to use as small a footprint as possible? Uh, in 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 the design? That's certainly what I'd like to do, just because of the different interests here, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
Yeah, when you're saying the smaller footprint is possible, Mike, like, are you just talking, you know. Keeping it to the six acres, like, for example, if any of those plot plans that we look at go to seven acres, we're just not, we don't want to touch those.
I would, I would use, uh, I would use as 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 little of this land as we need to use in order to. In order to achieve the goal that we need to achieve.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree with that, as long as we're not starting to strip away programmatic elements that we've all agreed to.
Yep, Scott, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I agree with Tim, I. Um, I wouldn't want to restrict the designer in that way on day one, I would, I would give it. When we, when we bring a designer on to actually go beyond this conceptual level. We can give that as an option for them and say, you know, lay it out. The best way educationally and then give us some options to reduce the footprint.
Just taking notes, sorry. Ada, you have your hand raised?
Um, yeah, and the the initial design that we got from DRA was three stories, wasn't it?
Uh, correct.
Okay, yeah, so I think, I think that's a reasonable. Um, height and, you know, whatever we can do. Within that to keep the footprint small would be great.
Yeah, there's a couple ideas I have, you know, with with the proposed site, there's some topography changes, at least where the track abouts, where this parcel is going to be. Um, and there's a few ideas I kind of want to run through a DRA on that also, uh, you know, to take advantage of that kind of grade differential. Um, it's there, so, okay, so I think, you know, prob, you know, the intent would be, I I can reach out to Carl from DRA. To potentially see if he's available to attend one of our next meetings. Uh, and start filling him in kind of on what we're doing, because the domino effect will be, you know, BSC group will do their work. Get all that done and that will feed into Carl. I mean, the good news is, I I'm thinking we'll have enough funding. Left to go through that. Um, and and I think that will help us a lot as we move into, you know, the Winter Town meeting or the Fall Town meeting in December. Anything else for anybody on this topic? And hearing that, perfect. So, next thing on the agenda, you know, as we're going through. Um, is planning of upcoming uh public meetings, as I referenced earlier with, um. Uh, Mr. Jackson, you know, the intent is, you know, as we get this information from BSC group. Uh, to sit down and do, you know, relay this information that we're getting, you know, rather than conceptual sketches that we have. Uh, meet with the neighbors, similar to what we did before, allow them to ask questions and, you know, do our best to inform them. Um, so, you know, a- as the next kind of couple weeks, month roll out. Um, just keep an eye out for, you know, essentially looking for volunteers along with myself to kind of be in some of these meetings. Um, and and that way, you know, we we can kind of go through them. Uh, currently, right now, we'll probably do similar uh to what we did before of, you know, a general. Um, webinar, Zoom, Zoom platform or something like that with the Slido application for Q and A. Um, again, you know, opening up if anybody has any questions or, you know, anything in general. Mike, sorry.
Yes, so sorry, so so Sean, I would, I would, I would begin those sooner rather than later, even before. We have all of the, all of the uh the boundaries set, uh, the boundary options. Uh, so I would do it sooner rather than later, um, recognizing that in September. We we'll have to, if we follow the same route, which I expect we will, uh, as we did before, which is. Uh, Park Commissioners, Conservation Commission and Warrant Committee, so. So we're going to want to get as much feedback from the uh, from the additional feedback, uh, from the neighbors on on. On this new concept as possible, so I would do it, you know, as soon as we can.
Okay. Yeah, and then a- again, that was kind of the point of tonight's meeting too, you know, I mean, I know we've been. Um, for like, but we're a little dormant over the summer, which is expected, you know, I wanted to kind of get everybody, you know, back on on track and, you know. Uh, that way we hit the ground running, you know, in the next couple of weeks and stuff like that. Um. In regards to any, anything else, uh, in regards to these upcoming meetings or, we're good. Sounds like we're good, perfect. So I believe, let me just go back to the agenda and apologize. So the next thing too is, you know, kind of kind of as I alluded to, with with the efforts we're doing with BSC group and most likely with. Uh, DRA coming up, kind of deplete all our funding. Uh, that we have as a committee, which is good, you know, it's lasted us about four years, you know, so we've done a really good job. Um, most likely in May, um, you know, we'll we'll have to start planning or request for future funding. Uh, in in order to do that in May too, we want to kind of. Uh, set scheduling or thinking of things, for example, traffic studies, uh, water runoff, you know, and any other type of professional services. We may need uh any of those things, so, you know, I I'll open it up, we can spitball ideas now, but. Um, I put it on the agenda mainly for folks to to start thinking about, you know. Um, as everyone does, you know, they're thinking about school building committee every night, every day, you know, I think, but. Hopefully, as, uh, you know, as we start transitioning further and further into this, you know, I mean, uh, going into May, which. As we're realizing with May, it really means January for these things, um, we want to be ready for that, so if you could, just be aware of that. Uh, any questions or commentary on that? And hearing none, perfect. And so, next, next, uh. Agenda item is our our meeting calendar. Um, so it it might, correct me, correct me if I go wrong, I always say this, I call on you, I apologize, but I defer to you for some of the procedural stuff. For the meetings now, there are three options that we can do, a full in meeting, a a full in-person meeting. Uh, a remote meeting, similar to what we're doing tonight, and then a hybrid meeting where we're in person and remote. If we do the hybrid, we have to have a a quorum in person, is that correct?
No, I don't, I don't believe you do.
Oh, okay, that that's, that was the reason I put that on there.
But 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 there are limitations, um, there are limitations to the hybrid. Um, because of the the um, the the technique, the the the. um, because of the the um, the 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 tech, the 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 technology that we have. In other words, we only have so many meetings that we can have hybrid. Um, and so, you know, we're trying to do select board and school committee, and warrant committee may want to do hybrid, so so there's there, there may be a limit on the the number of hybrid meetings that we can do. Not sure if we'll fit under that, but um.
Now, I saw that on the select board, you get, all you elected officials have taken them all for us and all our appointed people. All good.
Yeah, well, because we, you know, we gotta take more shots than than you all, so.
Yeah, yep, that's fine.
You know, we gotta put ourselves up there to take more shots, so.
So, so, you know, I I I think for us at some point, you know, a- as as we're sending out the responses for these meetings um, try, I'm assuming, you know, remote works best for everybody right now. Um, that, you know, myself, I'm an in-person type of person, I'd prefer to do it that way, but I understand uh, just for participation purposes, it's probably easier keeping it remote, so. Um, unless I hear differently from everybody, that that'll kind of be my 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 plan going forward, you know, while we have that as an option. All good. Cool. Um, so our next meeting, what I did, let me just see if I can pull this up again. So the meeting schedule we were keeping before uh was every three weeks, and let me share the screen. So what I was looking at is, you know, having our meeting tonight, and then it basically, if we continue a schedule every three weeks, it's gonna be a little harder. So I'm thinking every two weeks, uh, kind of leading up, you you know, the deadlines I got on here are October twelfth, which is the date the articles do. If we do that, we would essentially have three meetings uh between now and then. Um, so, you know, for now, that's probably the the rhythm that I want to keep our meetings at, you know, uh, every two weeks, you know, at least for the remainder of the year. So I just want to check with everybody and make sure, you know, Monday night, seven o'clock, every other week, sounds like a good plan for everyone. See a lot of nodding heads. Sounds good. Perfect. Stop sharing, and I'll share this uh, this document with everybody so they can kind of uh, run through and see, the red are kind of important dates. As we get some of the other meetings on there, all populated, again, as, you know, a central spot for um, everybody to kind of see what's going on, when and where, so you don't have to rely on email correspondence to set it up. And I think with that, um, so our next meeting date, uh, based on that schedule would be uh, September twelfth.
Sean, I have a question.
Uh, yeah.
Did you, have you gotten a sense from BSC how long it will take them to do the work that we're asking them to do?
Yeah, I have not. So you you you're kind of reading into my mind, and, you know, as I started laying this stuff out. Um, you know, I I, in an ideal world, we get it done as quickly as possible. Um, that's one of my reasons for poking them to to get their, the scope of services, so I get it and execute it. Um, so I won't know that until we kind of get that, so, um, I can't answer it this time.
Okay.
So with that, we kind of come to the end, end of the agenda. I think I spelled adjourn correctly this time, so entertain any motions to adjourn, and then uh although the one other thing, as we do the meetings too, um, you know, a- as we get those schedules, um, I I I think at some point, we got to figure out, you know, knowing the 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 issue that we had with the meeting minutes, you know, tonight of just having a backlog of them. Um, we'll we'll have to come up with a better way for uh, recording secretaries for these meetings too. So I'm I'm doing the notes for tonight. Uh, but kind of moving forward, I'm gonna try to think of of a better way that we can kind of do it for folks that are here, so. Um, yeah. That was the last thing I kind of want to talk about. So outside of that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Our second.
All right, Betty's second, perfect. And we'll do our roll call vote. Um, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Aqua?
Yes.
Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Uh, Betty?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, perfect, all right. Thank you guys all, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sean.
Good night.
Bye.